I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a short couple of things on the agenda for tonight. It's just two items. The first is superintendent search process and the second is the communications process that we want to develop for the upcoming budget and contract vote in March. So, starting with superintendent search, as the board knows, we received two proposals, one from the New England School SDEC, I don't know the rest of it, Nesdeck, and School Development Council, the New England Group, and then the New Hampshire School Boards Association. I'm going to sort of talk about each of them. I'm assuming that all the board members had a chance to review the documents I've received. And, you know, if you look at them sort of in a side-by-side comparison, they're fairly similar things. One of, I will say for myself, one of the things that jumped out more than anything else was the fee structure of the two different things because they are drastically different. Given the fact that we used Nesdeck last time and there is a guarantee to the process, which they've allowed us to sort of take advantage of, even though we're outside of the time parameter of that, we're looking at approximately $4,000 for Nesdeck all in, and I called to make sure that I was reading that correctly, versus about $14,000, $15,000 from the school board association. Granted, I don't want us to be looking for the cheapest bit, we want to use the best thing, but I think it's something we need to consider when it is substantially less expensive. And I did, I was looking at the Nesdeck proposal on the last page when we got to pricing, which put us at $3,960, and I was not fully believing what I was seeing, so I wanted to call and make sure that I was reading it correctly, and I was. And that does include all the stuff except for the stuff on the last page, the subsequent stuff.
It might be a common point because Dr. Ben Court did it two years ago.
It's exactly why. It's because we, there is a guarantee for the people that come in, and although we were outside the parameters of the guarantee, they decided that because we were so close to that window, that they were going to provide us with a discount even deeper than the one that they set on the phone.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I was, that's why I was not sure of the number, and I wanted to make sure that it was correct. But that is precisely why. And given the fact we have not had a relationship with the school boards association in this particular way, as we all know we do, the pricing is the standard price. Did anyone else have any thoughts about these proposals that we had?
Well, can you call who was on that meeting?
I was.
You were. What was your experience with how they administered the day meeting Nesdeck?
I mean, you know, it was my first go-around of a search in the academic world. You know, in my previous life, I was an HR manager, so I hired and did stuff all the time. So I think, you know, it was a standard process, I would assume. You know, we had some interesting things with the timeline-wise and different things that happened, but I think it was good. The challenge for me is not having the comparable New Hampshire School Board Association to compare that to, since I only had one isolated incident, I can't really. But, so, any other questions, thoughts?
I wasn't as heavily involved directly with it, obviously. This is kind of a different way to put it. I don't recall hearing any major pickups with Nesdeck in terms of their administration of it. I suspect that whoever does this uses similar channels to, you know, put sort of the public advertising of it.
I mean, I definitely think that, if you look at the two documents in terms of the process overall, you know, it's, they're not going to read, neither one is going to read it well, just like when we did the sheet of planning process, they just, you know...
And that those channels will be ones that probably folks in New England regularly are looking at anyways, right?
I mean, I would-
So my point is, I'm not sure, I don't know for sure, but I think that one will reach broader than the other.
No.
For-
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
And I think they both could reach broader if we chose to, you know, request it in a different way. They could go beyond, but I think that there's certain publications or things that are going to be reached out to.
Okay. And I was not on the board at the time, so I was not privy to any of that process. Who did we administer the principal search?
Ourselves.
Ourselves.
Yes.
It was all Pat?
Yeah, we did not, the only outside vendor has been, and the process for the principals was similar to the Nesdeck process because we'd just gone through the Nesdeck process. I don't know if it would have been that way without the Nesdeck process, but it was right back-to-back.
It seems, although I'm not sure who would be at the New Hampshire School Board Association materials precisely would be assigned to work with us on a search. I don't know if it would be, it would be Barrett.
When I spoke to Barrett, no, it would not be Barrett. He was, at that point, it was going to be a firm out of Rhode Island that they outsourced to.
That's right, that's right. Yeah. And so we don't know that, we didn't know that. I guess, I don't know if we'd find out if we asked them precisely who that would be.
Let me see if I can look at my-
In all of this, I suppose we don't have experience with that person, whereas Dr. Ben Court needs to be assigned to us for Nesdeck, because we do have experience with that.
Yep.
Listen, I'm all about the price. Like, $4,000 is done.
I mean, it's definitely a strong consideration.
The $10,000 difference.
And I'm just trying to make sure we're considering all the points too, in addition to that. And I think-
Yeah.
I think we are. Familiarity, it looks, I guess, Dr. Burke here is here, I can see her as well.
Kevin Burke?
Yeah. I recall making favorably of her at the time, seemed to be looking ahead and anticipating and made some thoughtful guidance to us.
I'm inclined to think that if we have that experience with people and have a sense of what their priorities are or how they match up with our priorities and our rapport, and they already have some experience with our board, to know, to jumpstart just on that before is valuable.
You know, also, along the same lines, the documentation that they helped us create for the last time, they own the documentation. Again, I don't think that it was invented for New Market documentation, but they have that with some tweet we can do last again, which I'm sure, you know, safety could happen with the New Hampshire School Board situation for this other case, Nesdeck they have.
I suspect that I would say the same thing about Nesdeck, so, in the only times where they vote.
It's also a time question. Nesdeck has everything, it's done. Like, there is no, we need to get this out?
Yeah.
Sounds, do you think we're ready for a motion?
What, does anyone have any more thoughts on it? Any point that we need to delve into a little more deeply before we move to the vote?
There are some additional services that you suggested, I suppose, and that we'll also pick it up.
And, you know, moving forward, one of them that I liked, which we might want to consider, is number three, which is the team governance, recruiting, and follow-up. That sort of, one of the search consultants comes to do team building and workshop with the superintendent for the school board and the school board from the beginning.
And did you want?
Yes, it's on the last page.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And so, I mean, given, if the decision is, and this is, you know, this is future, obviously, but, and the board could be different makeup at that point, but I would think if we were going to try to set the ground running successfully again, and we are not saving because it's not saving, but that's $1,200, we're still well below. So I would think that, you know, we might change our minds, but it might be something to sort of get the ground running in the proper framework to set everyone up for success.
Yep.
No, I was just talking to Kim the other day. I was saying, the first thing I'd like to do after this vote is set up our first retreat, like, get our retreat going, just kind of gather ourselves up again, dust ourselves off from the board. We just need to come together again as a board. So that would be a good chance to do that.
And I, I don't know if she's agreeing on that, but just, we, this could change, but just that I thought that sort of struck a chord with me, you know. Anything else?
I thought you were going to talk about brochure.
No, no. I'm past brochure.
So if you did come and announce a motion to accept the, fix the proposal of New England School Development Council, is there a date, November 2018?
We have a motion from Mr. Kinison and a second from Ms. McKinnney to approve, accept the proposal given to us by the New England School Development Council for our superintendent search. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay. I will, with the board's approval, reach out to them, and I think if it's okay, I would feel like to be the main contact with them. And so I will, I spoke to them earlier today, and I'll speak again tomorrow to get the ball rolling, and we'll have to check you guys' approval. All right. Next thing on the agenda is the communication piece. As we discussed and approved at the last meeting, we voted to accept the tentative teachers' contracts, we updated information about it, which, you know, we talked about the positives there, we need to talk about that further, but I'm at, there's sort of two-pronged thing I'm thinking about with communication. There's that, but there's also the default budget piece of things, which concerns me a great deal. So I think we sort of need to communicate this process in a two-framed way, one being the collective bargaining agreement, getting that situated, but also making sure that people understand the default budget and what that means and all that stuff.
And then it looks good, I mean, outside, but then inside it's-
Yes. Because my mindset is someone's going to say, oh, this is a lower number.
Well, we've learned over the years that a lot of times people will vote what budget committee okay's. So that's why we have to be clear, everybody has to understand it.
So, so those are sort of the broad two overriding things that I see that need to be communicated between now and voting in March. My question on Thursday was, do we develop some sort of committee to take the lead on these things? How do we want to handle this to make sure, would one board person be willing to take the lead on some of the communication piece and work with Meredith to develop some communication documents and that whole thing? And the rest of the board opposite too?
Yeah. Like, and I was thinking that we did have, as a board, we had a document that Meredith was prepared, of course, at the beginning of the discussion about, you know, some key sort of aspects of why. It makes sense, I think, something like that or in addition to that or add into that, for all the reasons, sort of an executive summary, because I think of all the reasons why it makes sense.
And I think the document that Meredith gave us last week is a good jumping off.
Yeah. And, you know, the, one of the chief reasons is to, you know, help retain our folks to spend money on training, to get them closer to market, although even still, we're not at market. You know, maybe some comparisons relative to the area after this, you know, if it's approved in terms of where do we stand, some comparisons to the state, because I think people can misunderstand that we're above market since we're making some jump, but we aren't, clearly aren't. We're just sort of getting a little closer, but not quite there yet. So, I think, and I don't, Meredith, if you can weigh in on this, I don't know the co-bribe sense or the, I guess, of working with the union to follow on a collective effort to educate folks and maybe have some sessions to explain the reasoning or joint statements, I'm not sure if that makes sense, or, I'm sure, I'm sure they'd like to obviously advocate for it because it makes sense to them and us, but-
So, if you're asking if it makes sense to partner with the union to communicate, I think at this point, it's a quality shared responsibility and the framework's own communications. You're elected by taxpayers to represent their interests, and I think it falls to you to communicate with taxpayers about that. That said, I'm sure this is each, you'll also be communicating with taxpayers about how it serves their members and their subsidiaries' interests, but I, I'm not sure that it makes sense to either of you, which I'm trying to be talking about.
And, yeah, and to further refine those, if you ever have, you know, sort of new amazes sessions or a session, I can do what we have with, you know, the building, the bond vote, also, it's up to the budget committee that's there prerogative, but whatever they like. So, those votes, then if we don't have the same message, we're not, we don't have the same document or whatever, if we're issue, they might have to hear from someone, or maybe it's just a matter of us saying, hey, you might want to reach out to the budget committee, you might want, if we have a session, you know, send a few of your folks to speak. I don't know. Just an idea.
I mean, I think initially, my first thought is, one-page document-
Or talk to them and see if they have in mind first. Maybe they, maybe they've already thought about this.
I mean, it's, for them, it's slippery. They're delicate bound. They can't, advocating for themselves because that can be seen negatively. And we are the ones that have chosen to support this, you know, because, and the reasons why we did are the ones that you outlined, Mike. We know that we have some excellent teachers in this district who have been woefully underpaid for a long time. And we decided, we can't get them competitive with the Seacoast region and recruitment and retention. We can't, we can't do that, but can we get people more towards the state's average of days? And we did the best that we could at this point with that. The question becomes, and is valuable to every stakeholder everywhere, because even if I never have a kid that's in the school, the schools are better, my house sells more quickly, things happen. I mean, there are benefits all around, but it's a matter of communicating those and helping people understand it. And then conversely, yes, or, yes, I understand your mind on this, but here's this default budget thing. How do those two things interplay with each other? Because they do, in my mind, as a voter in the voting booth. So, that's where I think, you know, maybe that one pager with this general stuff and then the default budget stuff underneath, and then the, maybe at the session.
Yes, a couple of procedure questions. The default budget, basically, this formula is, is based upon a decision ultimately of the budget committee.
It's a board's decision, but it is, the statute has changed on that. The board sets the default budget, has approved the default budget, but it's essentially calculating. It's just that the formula is different than it has been prior years.
Right. And so, when will we do that? I'm just trying to, I got a couple of questions about when will we do that?
Like, maybe-
The next meeting. And then, separate from that, the budget committee will be, I guess, considering our budget, the layouts will be considering the contract, the proposed contract, I would imagine.
Not the details of the contract, if they'll vote to support the warrant article or not.
Okay. And I wonder if that'll be at the same time?
As, well?
Yeah.
Well, essentially, if they do a second meeting, they have to do a separate public hearing, something to pay on that teacher warrant article, but neither of those were prepared for tonight because they have to give it the third, and he did not approve the teacher contract until the second, so you can't compare it all until you know whether or not it's a legal agreement.
Sure. So where I'm going with this is we, there's, of course, a getting up the speed or an educational component for between us and the budget committee, so they're not the goal. Yeah, the contract, and I'm just thinking, because they're not, they haven't thought about it, at least the contract at all, of course, because it wasn't the last meeting that it's going to be by us. And so, I think, thinking, when a timeline would be going to, you know, address, and I know, I know Elizabeth will be there, but, you know, let's get out ahead of that, I guess, is what I'm saying, because it would be great to have the budget committee support, if they have all their questions answered. There'll be, I know there's a lot of meetings on it, but then, after that, that seems to be when you have a public, more than public involvement.
Meredith, can I ask something that might help clarify?
Well, it's just, the budget meeting's tonight, and then their next date for a school budget review is January 7th, but we intend us to hear from the cost items tonight so they have an understanding that has the one thing, there's a support one that's implied something different or additional, so they would have that.
The project one pager?
Yeah.
No, I think that, that suffices for mine.
I haven't seen it in a while, like, I just remember it, so I need to-
Was it past?
I think it is there.
Okay, yeah.
I think that should suffice.
So, and then January 7th, they might vote on it.
It's another meeting for school budget, who, they don't vote until after the public hearings.
The budget committee will have their own public hearings.
Yes, they're required to, as I said.
We, I can also do-
Yep. The calendar, they have updated dates, I have what's on the sheet that was sent out, November 2nd. Warrant to be finalized, they continue to set a meeting date, a pre-session on the 2nd, and then they would vote following the pre-session. So we don't, I mean, right after, right after it's over.
This might help us think about-
Getting it out. I mean, they have to vote to set the warrants on January 15th, but they typically will be, I would assume they will vote on January 7th, or petition warrants are submitted on January 8th, and then they have the school district budget hearing on the 14th.
No, Meredith, in terms of your thought process of this communication, what would your, how would you see this fit, the communication piece fitting into that time? Or into the March, whatever the date of the voting is, the next?
Well, I think the deliberative session is really your, your primary communication point, and then following that, you're going to keep it out further. So, I guess, I got a communication prior to that.
Started the public hearing.
Right, which is on the 14th.
So, okay, my thought is that this type of issue is ripe for broom or taking it the wrong way. You know, I need not fully understand it, and it still all starts downhill. So, just generally thinking, and I know I haven't thought it through about what to get out there, but I think we need to get ahead of it. And, I don't know, and I'm just dead long here, I don't have-
Right, absolutely. Right now, you're, the thing about you have fifteen days.
Well, reality is this, just, you know, it wasn't that long ago that folks said their tax bills, you know, their various tax bills. Some may see this as just that, not fully understand the reasoning behind it. So, whether it's a combination of written in or, you know, having a, sort of a form to explain it.
My simple mind says, we take this time between now and the deliberative to formulate some sort of document, disseminate it prior to that possibly, or right after, but use that deliberative as the first, as a communication mechanism. Presentation is made, as was made in the past, to discuss things at that session. And then we can see-
The 14th, so that was-
The, the other session is February 2nd.
February 2nd.
So I'm thinking, and I'm thinking maybe-
Yes, Meredith.
But I think you're, you're giving them the overview tonight, but I was supposed to present the budget committee more formally, have that done on the January 7th date, so that you're articulating your rationale for this proposal in a more thorough way, because that's televised and part of the public's view. You can reiterate that at the budget hearing on the 14th, if the budget committee wishes to have you do so. And then, then you have that communication with them before the deliberative session, and then, again, after the deliberative session, and then after the vote, if that's what you want.
So I'll prepare to present on the 7th at the budget committee meeting. Face upon this, and we can all come together with a document, and you guys will all be there too, but I'll just do the presenting, if that's all right.
Throw one out, Mike throws one out?
No, everyone throws it all out. This is not, this is not going to be my document.
Right.
I'm just going to be the deliverer. If, that's all right. And then, see how that's received?
Let's do the attachment first.
You know, I'm a sacrificial lamb. It's about time. So why don't we start, you know, reviewing this document again? I would say it's a good foundational document in my mind, the one that we got last Thursday out from Meredith. And Lisa and Meredith, Meredith, I would ask you to help us articulate the default budget in, like, user-friendly way. So if you could maybe combine that and the default budget summation.
Just to be clear, so you have not yet seen a budget for the default budget, so we'll be bringing that to you on the 20th, because it's a separate item, and then following that, we can work through by documents that-
Right. And even, not even with a number, just verbiage on how to articulate it in an elevator-pitched way. This is what I'm talking about when I say the default budget process or the budgetary process. That's sort of what-
Yes, yes, it's changed. The default budget's a pretty package of prevo, you have to step inside.
So I think that, you know, regardless of what the number is, just so that we can all hopefully articulate what the new legislation is in the easiest, most palatable fashion.
I might ask a question, just because I'm on the board, I've probably been through the list of processes, and I do recall that when I led to the whole deliberative session process, when I first heard, when I first went to my first deliberative session and saw that the default budget at that time was more expensive than the recommended budget, is that, why would anybody vote for default budget when the recommended one is less? Is that going to be eventuated by our voters? Is that, is-
The reverse is likely to be true this year.
And that's what I thought. So we need to really help them understand that this is not what it used to be.
Yeah, I think people have to understand what's not included in a default budget and what the implications of that could be.
So now I'm talking with some of the groups that I've been talking with, groups that I would consider to be informed or not.
And that's why, that's why I know for myself, I need to have a concise, logical laying out of words to articulate what it means, you know, in terms of changes. And Amy, like you said, the default was a bigger number. It didn't make any sense. It's going to be opposite. So, just helping people understand. Is there any part of this communication something I'm missing?
Come on, Bill, let's, we don't, we don't, but one of the things that excludes things like the proposed contract, the things that aren't, like-
Anything that was not voted on, for which, if I'm not overspeaking-
By voters, yes.
If it was not approved by voters, can't go on.
Can I, I won't take the time to list things out tonight, but I'm, I'm just going to, I'll communicate, because maybe I have just a few more things, a few more details on that, I'll, and I'll send that sort of-
Absolutely. And then we'll combine-
I'll do that, because there at least I can, so.
I mean, we have a little bit of wiggle room.
Yeah.
But I think it's good that we have a plan.
Yeah.
And then we will, you know, once we get that document there, flush it out more to determine if we want to have some other meetings or subsequent stuff.
It may be, just, you know, a couple of our regular meetings that we-
I mean, I, I'm assuming-
Like, mostly not.
That we will talk about these things at every one of our meetings in between February, the two meetings or whatever it is, what we have, two meetings, because that is a way for us to get information out. It's televised all the time, people can come and ask questions about it, so, you know, encourage people to come that way too.
Would it be helpful at all to have one of our legislators alerted, or all of them alerted, so that when they are present at times of discussion, if somebody doesn't understand why the legislature in Concord decided to- understand why the legislature in Concord decided to redefine the default budget this way, that they would be available to answer questions with them?
Could make a preview to the summary, Kim's talking about it then.
And I'm sure, you know, Representative Cahill's usually had everything, so we can follow with him. So, any other thoughts about this? Is there anything that we're missing at this point?
Getting back to, I think, to the point that Mike made, there's some expectation that people will learn from the budget committee presentation of budget. I suspect the numbers that have been learned from that are very small. I'm amazed, after our meeting last week, I mean, there are buzzer calls, contracts is up, I have very, very, very well-educated people since that meeting, and I've talked with them, haven't even mentioned, so the concept of budget committee is helpful enough to be it, as much as I'd like to be. My concern about doing the deliberative session is, at least in the past, people have committed after deliberative sessions, they've gone to it, to express their, their points of view, which are often incorrect.
Just reformed.
Or reformed.
They just.
You know, it's, how come, you know, so my only suggestion, my only suggestion is, I agree with you all that our meetings, we should be talking about it, but I'm wondering, is there some kind of communication that you could provide before the deliberative session that answers the basic, just the basic stuff? And I don't know.
I think what might help with that, Al, is if we, you know, looking at the different things with the budget meeting, we had the last, the public hearing for that on the 14th. We have from the 14th to the 2nd to get our document into people's hands, and I think that might be the way to achieve that. And then so, it might be more of a review of the deliberative session, is that what you're?
Yeah, 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 because it's complicated enough without having to educate a lot of people about what's really going on.
You know, and I think, as Mike alluded to, you know, the tax bills came out, and that's fresh on people's minds, and I think people are going to have questions, and we deserve to give them the answers that are truthful with them, so I think that that's a good point.
Same thing on the default.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, old Joe's going to come in there and say taxes to eye, or, you know, all, you know, great, no, this, or.
Exactly.
And not understanding the importance, the default is not a deliberative, but the importance of this contract.
And we need, we, we need to hopefully pass the operating budget recording forward, so that we can do the things that need to happen, because if the default budget passes, that's a challenge to the operational process, because as Mike said, we do not have the money for the bus contract or other contracts. So I think those are the things that, but I think we all realize that's important, that we communicate this effectively, and I think, given that this is a new change this year, that happens to be coinciding with teacher contract, we just need to, um, focus on that.
So we're going to have to, we're going to have to go to the senior center, because again, they're the ones that, the default budget being less is going to look really good, so we need to explain maybe laws that might be. Meredith and Mr. Cahill going in there and speaking. We're definitely going to have to get ahead of them.
Anything else?
Does the electronic newsletter have any impact? I read a regular, but I mean, I mean, what should be.
The town newsletter?
The town newsletter.
I mean, I think it's, it's the time when we use the town newsletter. We use our, one of our newsletters that go out, we use Black Board Connect, we use any app, any communication resource that we have at our disposal.
Maybe they have a board member of his neighbor on the paper.
So you know it's going to come down to, it's going to come down to us, and, you know, all of these, all these avenues we talked about are all good, but they're going to get this amount of people. Once we have our document, we're conversant in it, we have our elevators pitched, which is essentially what I was hoping, hoping this turned out to be, is then when we're talking to folks, folks have questions, we can, you know, discuss them, because we talk to people, we see a lot, I mean, that's, that's, again, that's how we have a broadest, broadest, and in addition to all those other things that we've already talked about, but that's, I think that effort.
And I think distinctly on this one, where economic movements may matter, I don't think they point, I think this is, this is going to receive the same kind of reaction from all sectors. So the senior center was great, you know, we always talk about the point groups, and we need to.
Exactly, yeah, there are folks like that, you know, for lack of a better phrase, it's a better word.
Yeah.
But they need, they need to understand it.
Are you guys on?
Yeah.
All right. All right, but. And I think, again, people, they go away for the winter, right? And they just do their, their voting through the mail. We need to make sure that they're leaving with that information.
We have an information, information.
I think, once we get this all pulled together, that's when we're going to have to all.
I mean, maybe we have a reproofing situation at the, like after the first interview here, it says, okay, we have our document, this is the plan so far, and that's where I think we need to have some person who is the lead point person on these efforts, so I'll ask again if there's anyone that's interested in doing that, and then setting up any sort of branch out meetings if we need to do that, all those types of things. Help to it.
Well, you knew you were going to. We're all looking at you.
All right. Anything else about this? All right. Hearing nothing else, I seek a motion to adjourn our meeting at 7:41, no, 6:41 PM.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Zinkin, a second from Mr. Kennison to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. I mean, adjourned.